We're going to officially call this school board workshop to order at 1:12. And we are going to ask Mr. McInnes if he will lead us in prayer, and then we will go right into public comments.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we just thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed on our families, our friends, and our coworkers. We ask, Lord, that you bless each and every one. Lord, I know that this is going to be a tough day for some, for parents and administrators. We just pray that you guide us, Lord, for your will to be done as we manage the affairs of our community through educating our young people.
Yes.
We ask this in your name.
Amen.
Amen. Okay, at this time, we are ready for our public comments, and we just want to remind -- oh, we're not, okay?
We don't have any.
Don't have any.
Right.
Okay, so then that means we go right to our discussion on changing the start date of reopening of schools. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to you, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you everyone for your patience, especially those of you live streaming. We've had a few technical difficulties, and I think we're at a place now where we can begin. I just want to, first of all, thank a few people, and then just give you an overview what today's going to look like, and then I'll let you know kind of the information that we're seeking. But first of all, before I do that, I want to, first of all, I want to thank many of our employees and parents and community members who have been patient with us, been supportive, have asked a lot of questions, which we certainly expect. And this is a very difficult time for all of us because, you know, this is, it's been 102 years since we had our last pandemic. So, you know, we're learning as we go, but as we said in our leadership group, we're working a lot in the gray right now. There's no black and white models to follow. So we're making some decisions based on the current information and the guidance that we have from the Department of Health, the state, best practices. So we are all seeking information and really trying to work collaboratively with everybody in making those decisions. First of all, I want to thank Mark Modle, the president of the Putnam Teachers United, for his assistance. I know he's, you know, we talked to him last week, and he was a member of the task force. And I know he has, has been seeking information from employees about some of their concerns and has been relating questions to us. So again, I want to thank him, and again, it is our intention to work collaboratively with the union because we are all seeking the same goal, and that is to protect our staff and our students. Also want to thank Newsreel Jacks for being here today, help us get the word out, as well as the Plaque de la Nouve. And then we've asked three of our principals to attend today, and they're going to be available towards the end of our presentation. And we selected these principals based on their three different levels of our schools and three different counties. And we have Libby Weaver, who's representing the central area. She's at Medellin, representing elementary. We have Tim Adams, representing the southern part of the district. And he is a middle school principal, Miller Middle. And Brian Helms, representing the west. He's a principal at Interlocken High School. I want to thank our district staff, who is primarily seated on this side. We worked hours, and we spent all morning preparing for this meeting. But as you know, two weeks ago, we were in an all-day administrative retreat, working out the details of our reopening plan. And since then, we have been continuing to refine that. We've sent out, sent our plan out, and you'll be hearing more about that in just a minute, about the response from our parents and from our teachers and our other employees. So a lot of this is going to drive what we do in next steps. But the, this staff here, I can't say enough about them. They have worked tirelessly to make sure that we are doing the right thing for our kids. So they'll be presenting in just a minute. And our media department, led by Lennon Harvey, they have a lot of challenges dealing with all the Zoom meetings and all the surveys and all the call-outs. You know, we calling them a lot to be our, our voice. So thank you, Mr. Harvey, for your leadership. So here's how it's going to go today. I'm just giving you an overview of some concerns that we have as a district. I've had a lot of people speak to me personally, and I know you have too. I've talked to other superintendents that border Putnam County, as well as really all the superintendents in northeast Florida. Because we don't want to operate as an island. We want to be in concert with other districts, not necessarily making decisions because other people do that. But we want to make sure that we are all communicating and understanding what our general area is doing so that we can kind of support each other with that. We also, the biggest goal today is we want to make sure that we gather, that you gather information, and that we provide that through our presentation and our question and answer. We want you to be able to know what's going on, understanding that today, me as the superintendent will make a decision whether or not to delay the opening of school. That will be my, as the powers that you have given me, I will make that decision with your input later this afternoon. But again, I solicit your input, and again, I'm going to ask you at the end of the meeting, do you have an objection one way or another? You know, and we're not voting, obviously. But if there's an unmet need or information that you don't have, we want to make sure we do that before I make a decision. And of course, whatever decision I make, as you well know, you will have the opportunity to approve that decision at the August 3 meeting, okay? But we felt because of the timeliness, and the principals will speak to this, they have to know information now because they are, they are scheduling and making arrangements for the start of school. So it is, this is why we called this meeting today, is to make those decisions as soon as possible. So with that said, here are the areas that we're going to talk about today, and then I'll turn it over to, to the staff. We're going to start off just reviewing our reopening plan that we'll be submitting to the Department of Education. Ms. France and Mr. Hinky will be reviewing that. As well, and Laura, Ms. France will come up and also talk about our survey responses from the latest that we have, and you have those in front of you, but she'll be talking about that as, and then Ms. Whitehurst, HR Director, will talk about the responses from our staff, and that will help guide a lot of our decision-making. Mr. Bowen and Dr. Coleman will come up and talk about the CARES funds, how we're using those CARES funds to, number one, close the achievement gap, and number two, to keep our schools safe. Ms. Odom and Ms. Whitehurst will speak about the pay situation with employees. Remember I said last week at the board meeting that if we did choose to delay, that it would cause a gap in employees being paid? Well, they've been able to work through that, and they will provide information about that. We've got Quinn Romaine, Mary Garcia, on the phone or listening in somehow, and they will answer and provide information regarding the Department of Health. Any questions that you might have about the current situation, the numbers, you know, anything at all, they're going to provide that perspective. And then myself, I will talk about the impact that delaying the start of school would have on our community, as well as surrounding districts. And then our principals will be available for questions and answers afterwards about what are some of these decisions, and how would they be implemented and impacted at school level? So that's why we asked them to be here, is to answer those questions for you. And by the way, I want to thank our IT department. We think since we've met, we've actually provided a frequently asked questions on our website, and that will continue to grow. But the general public can go to that and actually get some of those questions answered right away, and if not, they can definitely call staff. But thank you for providing that information. So with that, unless you have any other questions, I'm going to ask Ms. France and Mr. Hinky to speak, and which mic are we using today? Is that mic going to be okay?
This should be a little bigger mic.
And then I will call out subsequent staff, and we'll entertain questions after each one, or at the end, however you want to do it.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
One of the things that we were allowed to do in this time of crisis is there was an executive order that we could offer something other than brick and mortar site and virtual school, and it's something in between that would allow us to have students be able to participate and, but not have to be at the brick and mortar site five days a week. Now Jonathan is going to review this draft plan for you. It is a template from the state of Florida, and it is what allows us to do option two. Had the state not given us this leeway and the ability to fill out this plan and turn it in, we would not be able to even offer option number two to our families. So I'm going to have Jonathan work through the plan with you, but you should have a copy at your desk.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just want to highlight a couple of things, and you do have this draft in front of you, and I've also emailed it to Ms. Crawford, who is at home. Like Laura said, the option that we've given parents and families here, option number two, which is PCSD digital, is the option which allows students to learn from home. But there are certain criteria that we have to abide by, and that's kind of laid out in this plan. So on page three, option two is stated in the reopening guide for students and parents, digital learning. What is outlined on those, the pages two through, two, three, and four, are things that are specific to making sure that we provide the exact same or as equitable of an education to students in PCSD digital as those who are attending their brick and mortar site. And so some of those things, just to highlight a few curriculum, all those students will follow the same pacing guide as students in their brick and mortar schools. They will have the same access to all of the resources and tools, as well as will follow the same assessment calendar and expectations for assessment. One of the things that is sometimes a point of confusion is this idea of synchronous instruction. The way we've set up our PCSD digital plan, no teachers will be expected to be teaching digital and face-to-face at the exact same time. I know that's a concern for some.
That was one.
The way ours is set up is that you are either teaching students in your brick and mortar school face-to-face, or you are teaching a classroom of students who are all learning from home. And so students who are part of PCSD digital, they will be expected to attend school during normal school hours, just like all other students. They will expect, they will be expected to be online, dialed in, using all of the platforms and tools that we have available to us, including Clever, Canvas, Google Meet, and Zoom. And their teacher will be teaching from a classroom. Just his or her students will be at home, not in the classroom with them. We do have a couple of things in here around attendance. Number one, students will take daily attendance, or teachers will take daily attendance of students. This is very different than the expectation that we had from March through May. This is an expectation of student attending school every single day, and attendance will be taken as regular procedures. There are a couple of things in this plan that may require students to attend their brick and mortar site, for example, for assessments, and we have laid out ways for that to happen safely and securely. And so that might look like a teacher who's teaching digital students. They may set up, you know, appointment at 10:00 AM. Parent will drive up to the school. Teacher will walk out to maybe pick them up. It's, you know, there are no other students or faculty around. They're both wearing a face covering. The teacher walks that student back to an empty classroom. The student takes his or her test, and the parent then picks them up at like 11:00 AM or something like that. So there may be opportunities, especially around specialized services, where students may be asked to come into school, but there will be safety protocols in place. I want to highlight just a couple of other things. On page five, there are seven assurances that we have to agree to, and a couple of them are really important. Assurance number one follows the executive order 20-149, and that executive order states that all schools, all districts need to provide students and families the option for brick and mortar five days a week, which as you have seen our reopening plan, we do have that option available to families. And then the rest of the assurances are around making sure that we provide all of the services that are required by law, as well as making sure that our digital plan, option number two, PCSD digital, provides an equitable education for all students. The only thing that has not been completed in this draft plan is on page six, and that is the actual scheduled reopening date. I will plug that in based on the superintendent's decision later today. Any questions?
I think it's, you're a marvelous job.
Yes. Mr. Hinky, the teacher that is instructing the students in option two, how will they assure, be assured that the student themselves are sitting there at that computer? Will the teacher be able to see them?
Yes. So we'll use, teachers will have the option, either use Google Meet or to use Zoom.
Awesome.
And so they'll have the camera, and so you'll be able to see that the student's sitting there.
So the computer itself is not just on time marching on, but that teacher will actually be able to see? Thank you. That was my only question.
And other students can hear each other?
Yes, so just like in a, um, you know, Zoom.
Okay.
Students will be able to interact with the teacher. Students will be able to interact with each other. The student can utilize tools like Zoom breakout rooms, where kids can interact and work together and then collaborate. So the same expectations of student collaboration and learning, and TV will be there, just that students might be in their own individual homes doing that.
I don't think we said this out loud, but I do want to clarify, we are, we are considering delaying the opening of school until August 24th, which means that teachers and other Timothy employees would return August 17th. But I just want to put that out there because that would give us, and we'll talk about all the reasons, but I do want to state, August 24th is what the date we are considering.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Jonathan, I do have a question. If, if a teacher is teaching in option two, and it's time for a student to have an assessment, when does the teacher have time to give, does the teacher give the assessment, or some other school personnel?
So those are some things that will be worked out at each school site. Again, just flexibility and brainstorming around how to make that work. Perhaps students that day have an assignment they're working on at home while there are assessments going on or something like that.
Okay.
So there's flexibility in that.
Yeah, okay.
That might be a question our principals might could address later on after our presentation.
And then social studies, algebra, et cetera, different teachers will teach that particular subject during that time.
At the secondary level.
It's a logistic nightmare, but I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, at the secondary level, students will have a regular class schedule, just like they would have if they were in the brick and mortar site.
It's like they're sitting in the classroom, but they're sitting at their kitchen table with a computer in front of them.
Awesome. While you're there, you, you as well, Mrs. France, I was looking at your survey, and I was trying to get, last year, what was our student population?
Ron is probably better at that.
Oh, just give me a roundabout figure.
But I, I go with 10,000.
10,000? Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at, we roughly got almost half on this survey.
We got greater than half, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, the new one, okay, I'm looking at 4,000.
She's actually about to address that.
But I will say that if you go online and look at our, the FAQs that Dr. Surrancey spoke about just a few minutes ago, we are also going to have online, what is the difference between option two and option three? And so that is something that parents can look over. I think we're going to post it on Facebook as well. Every parent who chose option two or three is getting contacted by either the school or individual who's been trained by Mandy Bernie, who runs our virtual school. And we are trying to get those numbers cleared up to make sure that parents have a very deep understanding of what is required on their part for students to be able to successfully participate in either of those options.
Okay, and so we didn't extend the deadline to give some that may have changed their minds now that they have more information?
So I'll address that now.
Okay.
I'm going to do this because otherwise it's very hot.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Crawford has a question.
Yeah, she does. She just texted.
Is she just on mute? Jane, just on mute?
Okay, I don't think I'm needed.
You're not.
Go ahead. Okay, do we have a number from each school? How many have opted to come back to school? How many have opted for option two, and so on?
Yes, ma'am, actually, that's exactly what I was about to cover. So the survey that you have in front of you, and Jane, I'm sorry, but I did not get to send that to you before we started today. Those are just the numbers of the parents that responded, that we have the information on for whether they chose option one, two, or three. And so on this sheet that looks like this is the first thing I came in and pulled up this morning, and then this is actually even more up-to-date than this. So if you'll look at this sheet here, at the very bottom, and you have to put your glasses on, I'm really sorry, but at the very bottom, there are numbers that are adjusted from the schools. So a lot of times, parents went in, they made an option, and then they said, oops, that's not what I want, so they made another option request. And so right now, we've gone through and cleaned up anything that was a double, like a parent made several different choices with the one that has the latest timestamp, so that was like their final decision. And then the IT department has taken those responses by school, and they've sent that spreadsheet to the school, so the school knows those students and what they picked. And they are going to be, this week, those schools are going to be contacting any parent that made a choice for option two or did not make a choice. So I know that you're enrolled in my school, you did not go online and take, make a choice. I'm going to make a contact with you to make sure that you are option one, so we can get really good numbers. When I contact you about option two, I'm going to make sure that you understand that you need to have consistent internet. It doesn't look like it did in the spring. It's very different. Someone's going to need to help be a learning coach at the home with the child, especially the younger they are. And so trying to make sure that parents are well aware what option two needs, and that they can check out a computer from the school to do that at their home. Okay? So as of this time, we have 871 students who have picked option three. Option three is Putnam Virtual School, and Mandy Bernie has created a script. It's really cute. I don't even have it in front of me. I don't know if you guys all know the reference to Jaws, "We're Going to Need a Bigger Boat." That number means we need a bigger boat. So we are all, we've trained a large group of people today to go through, what's the difference between option two and three? Here's a script. Please have a conversation with the parent, making sure that they understand that it's a semester at the least commitment. Students who are in access courses will not be able to participate in option three because option three doesn't have those courses available. So it is generally Florida Virtual, um, yes, FLVS content that is downloaded and put into a shell and managed by people via, in the district or surrounding districts, and we contract with Nefect to provide that service at Putnam Virtual School. So the CTE department, along with, really led by Mandy Bernie, she's done a phenomenal job at this, is contacting all 871 of these families, because each family that actually does choose option three has to have a face-to-face meeting, whether it's face-to-face or Zoom to Zoom, so that we can go through what your courses are, what are, who is going to facilitate for you, what do you need in your home to make that happen? And so we, they will be trying to work with these families to make sure that they are well aware of what that commitment means to their family. So the students who have not had a chance to respond will be contacted this week by the schools. Any student who has picked option two will be contacted by their schools directly to make sure that that's what they, they understand the commitment. And option three is being contacted by our CTE department and people who have volunteered to help make those phone calls so that they can ensure that that's what they're wanting to do. We will make adjustments throughout this week to what people wanted. So if a parent did not make the actual deadline, they're going to be contacted this week.
That's it.
Especially if they change their mind, they're going to be contacted. But we've got to have all of those numbers before we can start planning on how many students needed biology, how many students needed chemistry. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's like step one, is cleaning up this data and making sure that parents are very well aware of what the commitment is for all these options.
And our principals can answer questions, how this is going to impact them at the school level. You know, you can just imagine, by this time, they've already kind of worked their schedule out in a normal year. But now you're providing all this extra information, that's going to be some extra time. So if you'd like to, when we get to the end of the schedule, they can definitely answer questions on how this information is going to be dealt with at the school level.
And in option two, one of the things is that a parent might, a student might not get everything that they wanted. Just like when I was at high school, if you had 10 kids who wanted a class, it wouldn't have made. You wouldn't have been able to provide that class for students. So if we have a very small amount of students who needs, need something very specific, we may enroll them in one class of my district virtual school for that content. Also, if you are an A student, that content cannot be reached any other way than by a staff member at a school, and I need to make sure that we have enough staff, students wanting that same course to help them. So you might not get everything you ever wanted, but you'll get something akin to it.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know you don't know exactly how this is going to look in your workforce with who's going to go where, and who's going to be on first, who's going to be on second, and who's going to be on third. But what if a teacher, a teacher's already made a choice for her two sons or daughters, and if things change in the workforce for that teacher, that they would be pretty much destined to be an option two teacher, be, you know, in the option two side, not a brick and mortar teacher, not showing up daily face-to-face? Would they have the option to change?
It, it, the.
If they, if they are, if the teachers move to that, would they be able to change their students too? Because it's more accommodating, you know what I mean? If they, they don't know exactly where they're going to be as a teacher.
So they have made a choice in this way.
But they're student, they're, they're children's student, uh-huh.
They're only, well, their job will be during the day to teach, not to be the learning coach for their child.
Right.
So if I, if I was a parent and I had picked option two for my children, and they were young, and I needed someone to help them log on, it would not be me, because my responsibility would be to teach. I can't be the learning coach for my child. Now, I might be fine if my kids are all in high school and they can do that for themselves, and I can check in daily with their attendance. But if you have a young child and you've chosen option two for that child, you can't be standing in a classroom teaching and supervising your own personal child at the same time.
Okay, and reverse that. If you want to, you want to send your, your child's student to school, brick and mortar, but after you've made that choice, the teacher's been told they're going to have to serve as a option two teacher, they would have decided to go, go with option two in the first place. You understand what I'm saying?
They're still going to be at the school.
They're still going to be at the school.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, there's just, that's what I'm hearing from employees that are not knowing where they're going to be yet.
We don't really know where employees can be until we know.
I understand that.
Until where, we know where the kids are.
So you would make a special exception, probably, wouldn't you?
I think I can address that when I come up.
Okay.
And the one thing we have asked families to do is make a nine-week commitment.
Yeah.
Because it is impossible to, I put 20 kids in a class, and now all of a sudden, I'll have 10 more people who want to come back.
I understand.
And I have to find space. So in option two, we're asking you to make a nine-week commitment. In option three, you must take, make a semester commitment.
Traditionally, a principal assigns personnel where they most benefit the students at their school, and even though they may have their own children there, and however empathetic a principal can be, you've still got to meet the needs of the kids that you're assigned to.
That's great.
It comes first and foremost.
And so the one last piece I would say is that until we know our real student numbers, it's hard to determine what your staff needs are.
Exactly.
We do understand that we're probably going to need to resource teachers from across the district, especially for some of those smaller schools and campuses, who maybe only have like three first-grade teachers, and maybe only 10 kids in first grade have asked for that selection of option two. So we may have to actually cobble it together with other schools across the district and teachers. So we'll be working, not as silos, we're really going to be working together to try to meet the needs of all of our families.
Mrs. France, before you go.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we set up a way to find out if some parents are going to homeschool their children? Did we set up a, a way to find out if some parents are going to homeschool their children until this shall pass? So, when the school calls and I say, no, I've decided I'm gonna homeschool. And so, we'll make notes so that we could kind of see our numbers.
So, when a parent does say that, we give them Ms. Deal's number and ask her to go ahead and reach out to Ms. Deal and schedule an appointment. I do know that probably over the last three weeks, she's gotten thirty families...
Okay.
That have made appointments with her. And that will be an option for some families.
Okay, all right.
Do you have questions for Ms. France or Ms. Jane?
Thank you.
I do have a question about the bus, the, the percentage.
I think, is Thomas gonna address that?
Oh, okay.
I can, I was going, Miss Kears funding, but we can, we can take it right now.
Maybe we just, if you hold on to the question, we'll just...
It's, it's on there.
The families who actually, when we contact them regarding you haven't made a selection, they will fill out that survey, they'll fill out all the boxes of the survey. So, they'll be asking that question for the forty percent that did not respond.
Okay, all right.
So, we'll have updated information in a minute.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Whitehurst, on personnel responses.
So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As of this afternoon, like right before I came over here, I believe that this is updated as much as each one of our administrators and directors have heard. I know that most of them have already reached out and made contact with the majority of their employees. You have, I believe Ms. Cormany has already sent around, or is going to be... She's gonna give you a chart. While she's passing that out, let me, I'm gonna go over the, the options that we gave our, our employees one more time. So, they've had three options as well. The first one is that they return, brick-and-mortar, they're ready, like, they're gonna have students, they're ready to have students in their classroom face-to-face. Option two is employees are, and, and this is instructional and non-instructional. If it's an instructional person, they have the option of requesting to be one of the digital instructors when it's feasible, you know, based on the needs of the students. But that is still meaning that they are still coming to their assigned work location. They're not going to be teaching from home like they were in the summer, okay? So, I think that's one of the things that, that I want to make sure that we reiterate is that they will be on-site. They will still be assigned to the same school that they are assigned to now. Even if we have to, as Ms. France said, you know, we're not gonna be working in silos. We may have to do some cross-entity where a teacher has students at Price Middle School and maybe at Jenkins Middle School. That teacher, wherever that teacher is assigned, is still going to be assigned to that same school. It'll just be that the students will be from different places. Okay? So, I'm, I'm hoping that answers Mr. McKenna's question in regards to, like, if they're wanting to go back and forth, what the employee, their site is not changing. They're still coming to school, coming to their work location and working.
Okay.
Option three was that they are not comfortable with either one. And so, they are going to be seeking either resignation, extended leave of absence, or retirement. So, you have a chart in front of you, and we have roughly, right, approximately six hundred classroom teachers. I'm gonna talk about classroom teachers to begin with. Classroom teachers is what is in blue. We have sixty-four classroom teachers who have requested option two. And we have five who have said that they're either gonna retire, take a leave of absence, or they're just going to resign. So, if we think about that, that's maybe just like eleven percent of our teachers who have requested option two. Now, going through that list, some of those classroom teachers may be, you know, a, a situation where what they do is not necessarily feasible for digital instruction because it may not be a, a classroom, classroom teacher. It could be a reading coach, or it could be one of our student success mentors. They're still all kind of classified into that classroom teacher piece. Of our other employees, so now we're talking about our paraprofessionals, transportation, school food service, data clerks, secretaries, that, you know, anyone that's not a classroom teacher. We have about a thousand of those, nine hundred. And eighteen of those employees have requested option two. And five have requested that they are either going to resign, do a leave of absence, or retire. I do have a couple of the ones that is in the eighteen that did option two that said if they can't do option two, then they may be considering an option three. So, that, that option three could fluctuate just a little bit. So, you can see that, you know, for the most part, most of our employees are ready to come back, brick-and-mortar, knowing that we are going to be looking at safety precautions and putting all of that into place. Questions as far as our personnel responses.
What percent, did all teachers and staff, did they respond? I mean, what's the percent?
This was, we did not send a survey specifically out to them, but our administrators and directors have been...
They called them, okay.
They, they were, they were sent an email saying that they need to reach out to their administrator or their supervisor and let them know what they were doing. And then, for those administrators and supervisors that did, for the ones that they didn't hear from, they've been making those calls. So, if they haven't reached everyone, but from what I have been told, I think most of them have already reached out to all of their employees. There may be a couple of the larger departments that haven't actually got in touch with every single person yet. But I, you know, I think about our larger departments being transportation. There's not isolated work for transportation.
Right.
There's, you know, there, there's not isolated work for our school food service department. And that is the, the caveat of option two is that the, the job that you are reassigned to do has to be feasible for some type of isolated work. Or if you're on the instructional side, then it would have to be something that could be done with digital.
And so, the employee is fully aware that he or she, if they have chosen to be brick-and-mortar, that they have set up, but the ones...
The brick-and-mortar, yes. So, the, the, like Ms. France said, until we know student numbers, and this is what I've been telling, I've talked to probably about a third of our principals over the last couple of days about this. Because as, as a former principal, I know, like, your master schedule should be done and in the system, and your student scheduled at this point. You shouldn't have all of these different, like, what's gonna happen here, what's gonna happen here, what's gonna happen here. Until we have our student numbers, we cannot make the decision about where the employees are gonna go. But I will give you, we have two schools that they do not have any instructional classroom teacher that has requested option two or three. Like, every, like, we have two schools that every classroom teacher is ready to come back and do whatever is needed to be done. Now, are they gonna do some digital instruction? Those principals will work with, because they're gonna have the students who are going to be doing it. So, it could be that they may be having conversations with some of those and going, you know what? I really need you to do some digital instruction. So, just because they have said option one doesn't mean if there's not a need for a digital instruction, that may still happen, if that makes sense.
Right. And that person, like you said earlier, will be at a school.
Will be at a school. Like, if you are doing option two and you have requested digital, isolated work, it is still at the school or office or department that you are assigned. Any other questions about that? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna ask Mr. Bowling and Dr. Coleman to come up and talk about our CARES funding.
Afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, sir.
So, as you know, all these great ideas that you've been hearing, hearing about so far always come at an additional cost. When you start looking at additional cleaning supplies or equipment, or just who's gonna do this, the, the extra time and effort would be piled upon our existing workforce. So, the CARES funding or the, the CARES allocation was actually there to help offset that, to supplement, to actually pay for some of those things. So, when it came to personnel, we looked at one additional custodian per school.
Okay.
And that's to take away from all of the additional deep cleaning, just the place-to-place wiping down doorknobs, water fountains, just all the high-traffic areas that need to be cleaned additionally. And I'm not talking about if we have to shut down something separately. Just the increased role of our daily custodians that they would have to take on, take on if they had to do all of this additional cleaning. When it comes to just supplies, whether it's hand sanitizer, whether it's the, the Lysol and the other cleaning supplies that we use to sanitize different items, buses, those additional dollars, lots and lots of people are asking questions like, do teachers need to pay for that? Do students need to come up with additional supplies? Probably wouldn't be a bad idea for a student to have a personal, small bottle of hand sanitizer. But the cleaning needs will be met, and we have the, the CARES funding to help offset that particular expenditure as well as just overall cleaning supplies in general.
Mr. Bowling, can I interrupt? I know Ms. Crawford, I believe, asked that Mr. Chastain be available. I think she has some questions for him. So, Jane, he is available. If you have questions, I think that would probably fit in this category, other things.
Well, since you...
Say again? It wasn't you, I'm sorry.
I think it was me.
It was Holly, I'm sorry.
Well, since you've kind of cut in, I, I'll throw mine out. I love the idea of the additional personnel to help tables in the cafeteria, especially our largest schools. But I'm teaching six periods a day. When that bell rings, either teacher will then, because a new group is coming in. How does that look?
Now, that would be supplies that we, you know, there's simply not enough time for a cleaning crew to run in and sanitize an entire classroom.
So, the teacher then...
So, that would be additional, like wipes and things of that nature in the classroom. So, as a teacher, and I think one of the members from the leadership team this morning brought it up, a teacher might say, everybody, when you come in, make sure you use some hand sanitizer, clean your hands, take a wipe, wipe down your laptop, you know, that type thing. And then dispose of it in the red trash can in the corner, et cetera, et cetera.
Because one of the questions I received, there was a concern of them not the deep cleaning. We have since enough to know that, but the wiping. And so, I, I like the way that, that it would be suggested.
Materials for that in the classrooms. Every school will have a separate health room assistant. And I think they're being called something else by the health department, and I believe they're on the phone to chime in. They'll also be trained, and there's a, a set aside for training as far as that, that's concerned. But they'll get their instructions from the health department itself. And this is, once again, a separate room and, and a separate person. It's not currently in one of our bargaining units that, you know, we have to... We need to be mindful of everyone's working conditions, but we just don't want to put anything additional on those who are already in our workforce. See if there's anything else that I didn't cover. There's also on the instructional side, and I'll let Dr. Coleman chime in here as well, technology equipment to provide cameras to school to help facilitate option two. So, that'll be paid for through CARES funding. And also, progress monitoring, just various, just different assessments and software to help out with progress monitoring, both for the students who are on-site and those who are at home as well. Dr. Coleman, did I leave out? Where'd she go?
I think we've got it. Do y'all have any questions?
Most of the questions around CARES funding and the reason that we're talking about it at all is, it's just a big question of who's gonna pay for this or who's gonna do that. So, when that question comes up, it's typically answered by, we have a set aside, which is called CARES funding, and we take care of it.
Appreciate you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, good.
Did you have anything for Mr. Chastain?
I was, I'm just curious about, I've had a lot of questions about the air filtration system and how frequently filters are changed, how effective they are.
The filters are changed monthly, once a month, the filters are changed.
And, and what particular filter is used?
It is not a HEPA filter. I would have to check, see what kind it is, but it is not a HEPA filter.
And so, if we thought that could be a benefit, then, Mr. Bowling, that could be from CARES Act money? I mean, I know that is expensive, probably...
Very expensive.
To, to do that. I, I've just had a lot of people ask about that, and so then it made me question it, so...
And I know we have the Department of Health there on now, and I did bring that question up to Ms. Foster. And basically, her response was right now that we have some more basic things that we need to address. I'm not saying this is not important, but this is a huge expense. But we can ask them, maybe when they come up, we can ask them, you know, just how impactful having those kind of filters would be in the classroom, so...
And what would...
Try to find out how much they are compared to what we buy now.
And what would be the feasibility of changing them more frequently than a month? It's, I know it's an ordeal, but...
Well, we, we contract that out. It would be an expense to get them done more than once a month.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, I believe we're gonna have custodians, Ms. Whitehurst, come up and talk about our, our pay situation, payday situation, and also our calendar. And as you know, this would involve a change in our instructional calendar as well as pay calendar and so forth. So, that's something that falls under board authority, but they can address that now.
Okay, I believe Ms. Cormany has given you copies of the calendar, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
We have two different layouts of it. I like to always start with this one because it's the year-at-a-glance with each month. One of the things that with a reopening plan, regardless, you have to have a hundred and eighty days. So, there, there's not a change in that. Teachers, and we, we kind of look at our academic calendar, and we, we use the instructional and ten-month paraprofessional, like, we use that hundred, or teacher, hundred-and-ninety-six-day contract as we develop this, because that's where you have to work on planning days and so forth. So, from that, then we kind of build everything else. So, that's why you have the academic calendar that we're looking at. And that is what has to be, if a decision is made for a delayed start, it would have to be changed. So, basically, I just took and shifted. If we do a delayed start, and Mr. Surrancey has already said, the proposed, you know, what we are looking at and discussing is pushing students back to the twenty-fourth, which would mean employees back to the seventeenth. You can see on that at-a-glance calendar, I, I try to keep things color-coded because whenever I go to count, it just makes it easier. One of the other things that we have talked about, especially since with Putnam Virtual School, is a semester commitment for those students. The past couple of years, we've actually had semester one that was actually a little bit shorter than semester two so that we could keep to the request of the board of trying to finish first semester before Christmas or as close to that as possible, and, and trying to finish the year before the end of May. Well, if we push those back, those two things are out. Like, you can't even, you can't even do that. But then, meeting with Stacy Owens, who is our person who makes sure that everything is set in Skyward with our calendars and our bells, and she ensures that the FTE minutes are there and so forth. The importance of keeping both semesters ninety days is extremely important this year because of the, the coming and going possibly from Putnam Virtual School or even just, just trying to keep the... or even just trying to keep things as even as possible. You do not have to keep your nine weeks equal. So you can see up at the top, I do have, like, first nine weeks is scheduled for 44 days, second nine weeks is 46, it still makes 90, third nine weeks is 43 days, fourth nine weeks is 47, it still makes 90. And honestly, those are really just the way the calendar works, and it just makes sense sometimes to end a couple of days earlier to go a little, a day later. So I have just shifted that. We, students come back on the 24th. I have tried to keep as much as possible with the way the Calendar Committee had recommended things to you, trying to keep that three-day Thanksgiving break. I still have two hurricane makeup days in here, which we still need to keep in there, because we really can't afford any loss of time. And doing all of that, it, when we push back the start, it would push the end to June 10th. So just want to really throw, make sure that, you know, the 10 days does not go away, but it is doable, and you see how I have it laid out. And then the actual academic calendar that is what everybody is used to seeing is the other copy that I have given to you. I've had several people proof it for me. I'm not saying that there's not a mistake, but hopefully it is accurate as to what it would look like if we do a delayed start. So any questions around the academic calendar? And then Ms. Odom will address pay.
And state assessments will kind of fall where they may?
The, from my understanding from Ms. Lamero, the fall testing window, which is really just your retakes, they've extended it to make it a little bit of a longer window, but there has not been any change for the spring as of yet. And that's, I believe it starts the first part of April from last year's calendar. I mean, the previous calendar that was already adopted, I believe that that date was already on there.
Okay.
So. All right, Ms. Odom.
Good afternoon.
HR and Finance, we had a joint meeting, and we worked on the pay schedule dates in that event that we did have a two-week delayed start time. Our initial concern was working within a scheduled work period, August 1st to 15th, to get a check on the scheduled payday August 31st. We did work together and rearrange the work period, so there'd be at least some days in every work period. And because we utilize equal paychecks, making the change in work periods made then, was able to make the needed correction so that teachers, the paras, et cetera, would still get their first check on August 31st if a two-week delay of school started. In addressing some other categories of personnel, Ms. Phel had always asked for an additional day for bus drivers for training purposes, and with COVID, there's an increased need for training on safety and sanitation also. So we increased the bus drivers from 186 to 188 days, as well as our school food service general assistance from 187 to 189 days, working with both of those directors. And that was also for training in safe, on safety and sanitation. And a bonus of adding these two additional days to these work groups to complete this required and much-needed training on new issues being faced, was the fact that it also ensured that these essential personnel also had at least two days within the work period, ensuring that they would get a check at the same time that they've always been used to getting them. So if school is delayed for a two-week time period, no one's payday will be changed from what they're currently used to receiving. Any questions?
That is a big relief.
Oh, a relief, yes. Thank you so much.
I want to thank our Personnel and Finance Department for doing that. That's a huge deal, and they spent many hours working on that. So thanks to you.
Yeah, you come back after the summer. That first paycheck is so crucial.
That's huge. And none of us can predict the future, but we're going to have to start at some point, and then as numbers either increase or decrease, we'll have to adjust as we do. That was a good idea there.
And I appreciate the thoroughness of what you all are covering, because we have our employees, a lot of them are listening in, and it shows through everything and every effort you've made that you are concerned. And a lot of the questions that I had read in letters that they had sent and calls that we had received, that you have addressed them. It's almost like you haven't left any stones unturned, but yet, if there is something under the rock and we find it, it's not like we're going to try and hide it. No one wants to put them in harm's way. And they didn't address it as such. It was just they didn't know, and they wanted to be able to visualize and put these things into perspective. And I personally, along with the Board, we appreciate what you've done. We appreciate that.
Next, we have the Department of Health on the line, and we have Mr. Quinn Romey and Mary Garcia. Mary and Quinn, can y'all hear us okay? And can we, can we hear you? Can you unmute so we can hear you?
Jonathan, are they still on one?
I know they're still there.
Okay, we're still on the line.
Okay, Mary, we can hear you. Quinn, can you speak to us?
You just have to keep re-unmuting yourself.
Okay. Well, maybe if Quinn can join us in just a minute, but Mary, thank you for being on. And I know Kenna Foster was supposed to be on, and she was not available today, so.
I'm on as well right now, so there were a second or two.
Who is that?
She's trying to.
Did everybody get the paperwork that went out on guidelines?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So Mary, can you just talk to us, any implications if we had a two-week delay in start? How would that, if at all, impact the Department of Health or anything else? Just what would you have to say about that for the Board?
Well, I'm pretty certain Kenna would say the same thing, because she is in charge of the school health. With us right now, with COVID, it would be hard to be able to train any individual that you have coming on board on all the skill sets that they need to have to take over those extra rooms. And all of that does fall under her license, and so they would have to be trained under her. So if those individuals are not on board, you'll have to have the timing in place to be able to train them. So I think, I think we talked about this a little bit, that it's not, we certainly will support every move that children come back to school, getting prepared, the same questions you all have been having. What is it that we have to do to get each section correctly trained or correctly prepared, correctly have all the protocols in place, all the supplies in place to be able to move forward safely? So I appreciate all your, all your comments and conversations.
Yeah, and again, I think that was mentioned before, we are hiring additional staff to work in our health rooms, health room assistants. And right now, we are advertising, I don't believe we've hired anybody yet, I don't know the principals, but just get, hiring them, getting them on board, training them, which I think Mary's referring to, there's going to be some time involved with that, as well as our additional custodians who will come in and, you know, be the person that goes around and sanitizes, cleans areas and that type thing. So any questions for Ms. Garcia?
I have some.
Was that Jane?
Jane.
Okay. Because I was going to ask one.
Jane, go ahead.
Okay. Mary, if one student in a classroom tests positive, will everyone in that classroom then need to be tested?
It depends on the timeline on when they tested positive. So if, my biggest concern is the onset of the disease. Just because a child tested positive doesn't mean that they were actually in that classroom at the time. So one of our biggest things that we have to do is to really recognize the symptoms really quickly, especially in children, because they're a little bit different than they are for adults. We're seeing an incredible amount of loss of taste and smell, a lot of pain in their eyes, some headaches, which is really unusual for kids, and then sort of pain, muscle pain. So that's one of those things to really look out for. You really are going to need to work with your parents as they come in to ensure that any child that is starting to have those kind of symptoms, the loss of taste or smell apparently comes on pretty early, to really remove them and not bring them into school. So that is really going to be a hard look at educating our parents as they come in. What is, what am I, so I think that we're all learning that. That's probably more of a chemo epidemiology question, it'll probably kill me, but the catch is each of those children, we actually then would have to monitor and follow. And really, one positive would ensure that we would have to at least close that classroom down. But you also need to look at the extended consequences of it. So that's where we really need to make sure that we have really good monitoring in place.
Right.
Are those individuals going on the bus? And that's before contact tracing comes in as well, that you're going to, you know, are they going to wear the mask? Are they wearing a mask in class? If each of the individuals or the children have a mask in place, it's less of a probability of being a contact. If they are not wearing a mask, then that does increase our likelihood. At least that's what we're hearing. I mean, remember that this is just something new for us. We've only been at this for forever, but only at it for a short period of time. So we learn something new every day.
Right. Because I think, you know, it's one thing in an elementary school, but when you have middle and high school students who have six classes, and, you know, if that one kid is exposing students in six different classes, it could get crazy, potentially.
Potentially, yes. And I think the only good part of it is, is that if you are a little bit older, you might be more willing to keep a mask on than you might if you're a younger, a younger child.
Yes.
So I think that that's what we need to look at. You'd have to really examine your social distancing. Are you really able to separate all the desks apart? Are you able to do that? Is there transferring from one room to the other? Do you think about, can we change that model around to be able to not congregate in the hallway, not congregate in the classroom, not congregate in those locations? And if you do have to, would use less of the social distancing then, that we're really keeping really good hand sanitizing techniques, keeping a really effort to make sure that there are masks on. And it's not easy. I mean, we all do it ourselves every day, and it's difficult sometimes to remember. So I can't blame the younger person of me, says that that would be what we really need to look at, is what's the habit to be instill in individuals for having them be compassionate and help their fellow students and your teachers as well. Because the students may not get, well, we're having a lot more younger people come down with our new cases and our hospitalizations as well. They still have my, they still have symptoms that are not as hot as adults, for the most part. We're talking about the 45 to 14-year-olds.
Okay. I have another question, and this may be for you and for, for our leadership team in the district. Are we going to try to take temperatures of students before they enter the classroom?
I think that's the leader, your leader.
Thomas, you want to address that? Thomas is going to come to the mic and address that.
Okay.
As of right now in our plan, Jane, it says that temperatures may be taken. Now, I know some individual principals are already building into their procedures to take temperatures of every student that enters the building. It's more practical in some areas of the district than others, but whether or not it's practical doesn't mean it can't be done. If you think about where you last served in a school, Jane Palaka High School, imagine how that would look, trying to get 1,100 students in that building into a single point of entrance into the school, and keep them spread out and get them all, get all those temperatures taken, and then get them to class on time. So logistically, it's not that practical, not to say that it can't be done.
I just think it could be our first line of defense, you know, if we had a kid that had a really high temperature.
Yes, ma'am. So currently, in our procedures, students should be self-monitoring from home, and if they don't, if they do have a temperature, they aren't supposed to come to school at all. And then it's written in that temperatures may be taken, because we may adjust that plan to start universally monitoring or checking every student. But as of right now in our plan, as of, you know, in this very moment in time, it just says that temperatures may be taken.
Jane, Jane, and Mrs. Garcia, and for you, Mr. Bowlen, as well, what I'm hearing, educating the students on the symptoms, and more so our middle and high school, any of these things you've mentioned, the loss of taste, yeah, we got down the mask, we've seen the social distancing because it's in the store, but how do I monitor myself, educating them, and trusting that that student will go to that teach and say, you know what? I don't feel good. Then, these additional people that we've hired can check the temperature of that. It would be ideal if we could check every child, but the example you gave with Palaka High, it would almost be like a nightmare. And so we're trusting that with the parents' help at home, with the students saying, hey, this is what I'm feeling, taste, et cetera, we would be able to work together to at least keep a, keep a hand on it.
I would expect, yeah, I would expect parents to monitor that at home, and, you know, we'll, if we have a reason to suspect at school, then maybe go for it.
Because one of the teachers said to me, but we have parents that work, and the students put themselves on the bus. With education, that student can say, hey, you know what? And we're hoping that these things will take place with education.
Mary and Quinn, you're on the line. Is there anything else you want to say to the Board, or the Board, any questions you have for the Department of Health?
Hi, so it's Kenna.
Hey, Kenna.
So it's Kenna Foster. I'm, I'm joining the call. I don't know what's been discussed thus far, but I would just like to review that right now, we do have a 33% positivity rate amongst our pediatric population, which will pose a challenge at this time. And I think the main goal is not focusing on the numbers, because this will be a while before it ends, but focusing on making sure that we have systems in place that we can safely open. And at this point, my concern would be, in the amount of time that we have before August 10th, hiring and training not only the triage room staff, but also the teachers, bus drivers, et cetera. With how the rules are now, you will not be able to say, oh, Johnny always has allergies, so we are not going to send Johnny home. It won't be, well, Johnny always complains of a stomach ache, so we're not going to send Johnny home. If they have how the rules are written now, any of the COVID symptoms, they will be isolated and they will be sent home until it can be ruled out otherwise.
Good.
If we have how the rules are written now, one positive in a classroom, and then we investigate according to an algorithm, and we determine contact, then it is possible that whole classroom would be sent home, including the teacher, for 14 days unless the teacher did not have any symptoms. And then they would fall into the critical infrastructure rule. So when you were looking at a high school student that potentially changes classes six times with six different groups of people, that would include all of those students and teachers. Now, currently, the Board of Department of Health and CDC are looking at the outbreak guidelines, what is a contact. But as of today, if we open tomorrow, that would be the guidelines that we would go by.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Foster?
Okay. None for her, but certainly, I would like for Mrs. Whitehurst to repeat again and again. This is for those that may not have heard you last time, when you talked about the additional COVID days that- COVID days that are given, uh, based on what was just shared with us, I want the employees to hear, uh, that explanation again.
As of right now, um, there is federal, there is a federal act called the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that gives all of our employees 10 paid days, um, up to 10 paid days for a COVID coronavirus-related situation. So if they have been told they have to quarantine or self-isolate, self-isolate based on a certain situation, or if they are sick themselves and they've been told that they need to stay home, or if they are experiencing symptoms and seeking medical diagnosis, any of those three reasons, then they would, they would be eligible for up to those 10 days that does not go against their sick leave. That is 10 days that we will take care of.
I just needed them to hear that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Kenna, Mary, or Quinn, do y'all have anything additionally that you need to say that might help the board understand how delaying, how that would impact, uh, students, staff, community?
I just think at this time, I, I go back to, I do not see how you could, it, like you said, it would concern me how we would hire all of these health room individuals, have them CPR trained, have them COVID trained, and have all of the systems in place to safely bring students back.
Okay. I think that's kind of the central issue right now, especially, thank you, Kenna, for.
I, I have a question. Is there a certain percent positive number that we would be looking at to be acceptable?
For the positivity rate that you referred to. Kenna, did you hear that? She wanted, I always wanted about the positivity rate.
There's so many more things we look at besides the positivity rate. And I think that fluctuates from day to day, week to week, month to month, and it is a virus that we are going to need to learn to live with. So my position as the epidemiologist is we need to develop a system and have systems in place that we can handle any positivity rate based off of our procedures.
Okay.
I, I know that's not the exact answer you're looking for, there's so many more things that go into place and we just don't want to be in a position, I mean, FWA is working on those standards, CDC is working on their state standards of what you would look at. I can tell you, um, if we were to open tomorrow, you would be minus about 300 kids just off the bat because of isolation or cable. And that's a rough estimate. So, um, one exposure in a classroom would close it down and I would rather make sure that we have the procedure so that that do not have to occur.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Jane, go ahead.
Kenna, do you, and I know this is just a, a guess, an assumption, could you see the possibility of one school having to shut down while others don't have to?
Well, I, I think when we're talking shutdown, we are not talking of saying this school is closing for the duration, but when you are doing an investigation, there is a possibility, if I only have a case, let's just say, uh, J. C. Wong, well, it's not going to affect everyone else right now. So it could mean that J. C. Wong would have to close, or half of the school would have to close what we claimed as contact rate.
Okay.
And, and the job description, just a brief, um, job description for the additional health room people, what, what does a day look like for that person?
Ms. Whitehurst, or, um, can anybody else have a job description?
Oh, okay.
I think, I think, I think that's, we're, we're still developing the, uh, the what?
Kenna.
Oh, Kenna's got that?
Or she was going to say.
Don't follow me.
So, that, that individual worked directly under my RN license, they must be CPR certified, they will be trained in COVID, and they would not close to other classrooms at the school, unlike the health room aides that we have now. This individual, because of the contact that they would essentially have, we would not ideally send them to a lunchroom, we would not send them to a bus stop. So we just want to need to find something for this individual to do that they can do in that room. They will also have to be trained on how to dawn and daw, or TPE, because when an individual comes in that room, you are considering them to be, it's not that person that's supposed to be. But we have to make sure that we have the goggles, that we have to have the N95, that they have to down, that they have to lock, that they know how to do it.
So the student goes to them. Gotcha. Thank you.
Jane, or anybody else have any further questions for the department of health?
Just one question.
Quinn, go ahead. Do you have something?
Hey, I've, I've finally figured out how to leave my phone. Um, I just wanted to add one thing. Kenna and, and Mary, it, uh, you know, the high, high sex terms in this, but a part of the contact tracing that they're talking about is a very in-depth, uh, everybody who's is a positive goes through the contact tracing process, and, uh, each of those contacts, we, we have to see through the contact tracing process, you know, contact them. So conceivably, you may have a classroom that's, uh, like Kenna was saying, that could be isolated, but you also have to look at the, the child itself, bringing it home, and that home is also on isolation and ultimately those, uh, employers are, are infected, are involved.
Okay. Thank you, Quinn. Anyone else? Any other board members? Or, uh, Kenna, anything else?
I have a question, I think may fall into this area, if not, just tell me. Um, do we have a plan in place and we have to go into a lockdown?
Lockdown plan?
Like a code red or something, I guess.
Wherein they're going to be in closer proximity then.
Maybe that's, uh, and we can, maybe the principals can address that, but, yeah, we.
I'll be working with Travis Weaver on, uh, procedures for that, so look for that in about a week or so, Jane.
Okay.
Yeah, we still have to do those drills and everything else for school safety.
I know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. More members, any other questions for the department of health?
I'm good.
We just appreciate it so much.
Very much.
Yeah, we work very closely with them. Uh, I do want to mention Randy, Randy Heslin's in the room, and I'm not putting him on the spot, but he will be, we will be getting information later from, uh, FHSAA, Athletic Association, as you well know. I believe today they're going to make a decision regarding, uh, at five.
Board meeting today, and they'll be making that decision about, uh, the fall, when they're, when they're going to start. We're scheduled to start right now on.
Randy, can you come up just a minute, because I, I know people at home want to hear.
Yeah, that's one of the things we talked about with extracurricular activities.
Right. Randy's our director of student services and keeps close contact with the high school activity association.
Yeah, the high school athletic association is meeting today, a board meeting today at five o'clock, and then they will be making a schedule, uh, to see if we're going to start, uh, the fall sports, which are, there's quite a few that we're going to start those fall sports. We're scheduled as of, if it were to start July the 27th, which is, I believe, next Monday, they're scheduled to start practices, which in two weeks that would be scheduled for, they could go into, uh, full contact and they wouldn't be able to go into, to have a fall, uh, jamboree or something similar to that in their, in the school when they happen. But, yeah, they'll be making a decision, uh, this afternoon.
And, and again, Randy, any, if, if the beginning of school were delayed, I guess that would not necessarily have an impact on the fall season at all.
No, that, that should not have an impact because those kids will be coming back next, on Monday, to start practicing next Monday.
We do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, Randy and Thomas and myself will meet and just basically, uh, study the decision that was made today and then we'll try to send out some information on how that's going to impact, kind of. Thank you, Randy. Okay, I'm going to call, uh, this time ask our, well, before I do that, principals, let me just make a couple of comments on community impact in surrounding districts. I just want to point out, you know, Potten County School District does not operate in a vacuum. You know, we're part of our larger community, and a lot of times what we do can impact our community directly because of the parents and so forth. But I do want to point out that, um, I think, uh, and Rhonda, correct me if I'm wrong, but beginning August 3rd, we will begin our feeding program, our, uh, where we had our routes and also drive-through feeding. So again, you know, school is very important for a lot of our students to be able to be fed. So we will continue that practice like we did in the spring. Do you have the dates, Rhonda?
Yeah, I got an email from Nikki today, and she said the school food service department will restart our summer feeding program at six schools, um, Milton, Barney, Brown, Pierce, Jenkins, Moses, Interlock and Elementary, and I pull up, we will provide drive-through meal service at these schools and restart our van routes as we have been doing all summer long, August 3rd through August 13th, Monday through Thursday, 10 to 1:00. And on Thursday, they will hand out breakfast and lunch for Friday meals that they have been doing all summer.
And for those of you at home who couldn't hear that, uh, we, we will begin our feeding program again at six schools around the district, uh, and we'll provide drive-through service. So I think we'll probably put that either on Facebook or website, just so people can reference it. But I do not want people to worry about not having meals. That is a very important consideration, so we will definitely continue to do that. So thank you for providing that.
Dr. Cersei, would, if, if we delay the start, would that just continue?
Yeah.
Yeah, until we're back to school. Yeah, good question. And also, I just want to point out, I don't want to take it lightly, there are many parents in our community, and I can only imagine, maybe single parents, that a delay in school could have a negative impact on, and I'm sure you've heard from them, and my heart goes out to them, and, because a lot of them need to have their children go to school so they can work and bring in an income. I get that. And, uh, you know, the government is addressing some of that as well. But we do not take this lightly, and we, we look at that in a bigger context of, uh, we need to do the things we need to do at school to protect their children.
Yes.
So that, that in itself could result in a delay. So I just want to point that out and recognize that we do empathize with those folks and we definitely, uh, want to consider how this impacts everybody, as well as our entire economy. Everything's hinging on our school district getting back to work, but again, we don't want to hasten.
And I know you didn't want to, I mean, the last thing you want to do is, is delay the process, but out of an abundance of caution, I think you're making a, your recommendation is well taken.
Right. Thank you. And it, and again, I just want to stress, it is not just our school district, it's the entire community that we have to consider. And again, our surrounding districts, and I mentioned this already, we will be in contact with our surrounding districts just to see, you know, we don't want to be the Lone Ranger, so to speak, so we want to know what other districts are doing, and I know other districts have already entertained this as far as delaying, at different, uh, times of the week, they'll be, you know, bringing this up to their board. So this time, I'm going to ask our three principals to come up, if you don't mind. And actually, when I, earlier, I mentioned they were different parts of the county, I think, but they're diff, or different counties.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Bowlen always, uh, checks me out, makes sure I'm saying the right thing, but three different cities or three different areas within our county. And if y'all will come up just a minute, um, Brian, Libby and Tim, and they, they don't necessarily have a presentation unless they want to, but they are up here to answer questions from the board about some of the things that we've presented to you today, how that might impact them at school level and how they might be implementing these changes and delays and so forth, so. And Libby, let me, would y'all come up, just introduce yourself and, there you go.
Yes, I'm Libby Weaver, and I'm the principal of Mellon Elementary School here in the central area of Palaca.
Um, I'm Brian Helms, I'm the principal of Interlock and High School in Interlock.
And I'm Tim Adams, principal of Miller Middle School in Crescent City.
Okay. Mrs. Williams, just roughly about how many students do you perceive being in a classroom?
From the responses we had, which we had over two-thirds of our students respond, um, we are looking at about 100 of those planning to come back. Um, and then we had another close to that that chose another option other than brick and mortar. The unknown question is the 100 that we didn't hear from, which we are in the process of trying to make contact with them at this time.
And so you look what, the typical classroom size for elementary?
We typically in kindergarten through third grade look at 18 students, and then in fourth and fifth grade, we look to 22 students. Um, we are expecting smaller numbers than that, of course, because of our change. However, knowing that some of our staff will have to be reallocated to meet the need of the online learning situation.
Okay, so that will make it easier with our social distancing, you know, the classroom setup.
Absolutely. And as we planned our master schedule, um, before we kind of got to this part where we're, we're contemplating a possible delay, um, we tried to be very cognizant of that, looking at, um, I've kind of described it to my, um, families and employees as putting children in bubbles. So you're going to be included in the bubble that is your homeroom class, which I know is very different for our secondary people. So my job in this regard is very easy compared to theirs. But everything will be done within that bubble, so to speak, um, and you will not be mixing with other bubbles on campus. And we have walked through our entire day from the time that the children arrive on campus and, in fact, until they're dismissed. Um, we have worked out a system where, um, we are not going to be using our cafeteria for our masses at all. Um, everything will be isolated to the number of kids in your classroom. Um, in addition to that, um, trying to maintain school as normal as possible, but using a lot of common sense, we also are, um, looking at scheduling, um, breaks in between PE classes, breaks in between LLI labs and intervention labs, things like that, for the purpose of having time to sanitize in between. And I know somebody brought up earlier about the changing of classes, and one thing that we've put into place is, and we only have our fourth and fifth graders who change classes, which again, these guys behind me have a much tougher job, but what we have put in place is ordered a material so that when it's time for a class change, every child has, uh, what's equivalent to a Clorox wipe, wipes down their area, um, and then as they line up to change class, drops that in the trash. Um, we've established sanitation stations in every classroom and in common areas around the school so that there's plenty of access to having that available to them. And, um, also not sharing supplies. We, um, have, um, basically every child will have a Ziploc bag of supplies, that is their supplies. So back in the day, when you may have a, a set of supplies and then on the table and kids just reach in and grab what they need, we are certainly not going to go to that model, um, anytime soon, um, before we get some relief from where we are with the virus. So we feel like we've done, um, as much as possible, um, to keep our kids safe.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Weaver, are you, are you having summer school this year?
We actually are. We have had 35 third, fourth and fifth graders on campus, um, since July 6th, and, um, it has been extremely successful. Uh, we, of course, were unsure of how that was going to go with asking young children to wear masks. The kids have been fantastic with doing that. They're aware that the world is different and the world has changed, so we haven't had issues with having children, um, not wanting to wear the mask. You know, the biggest thing that you see is, the nature of small children is to interact physically with one another, but you even see, um, pauses with that where they will see you, or they will see another child and they'll go to hug or, or, you know, get really excited, and then they'll have that pause, and then they'll just kind of wave or do the fist bump. So, um, because of the nature of this being something that's affecting the entire world, our children have very quickly picked up on a change in behavior.
We have, and while Lucas is up here, we have ordered, Thomas, I believe, we've ordered some face shields.
That's true.
Is that, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, we, we're ordering face shields.
And I know it's very important, you can speak to this for, especially young. And I know it's very important, you can speak to this for, especially young, the teachers of younger children that need to be able to see their mouth. You want to speak to that?
Absolutely. And in fact, when you think of primary children and you're learning, you're teaching them phonics and learning, teaching them to read, very much so they need to see the movement of the mouth. And so I actually ordered online some face shields to have for summer school because we have a hearing impaired child on campus. And knowing that he is, number one, not always Johnny on the spot with wearing his hearing aids. Number two, is never going to draw attention to himself and speak up, is making sure that we had those available so that he could continue to read our lips and be able to, you know, go through his day without the other kids even being aware of, of his disability. And we feel like that that will be the same route we'll go with our primary students because of making sure that they hear those pure sounds and they're not getting a muffle or they're not seeing the way the lips are moving to produce those sounds.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Jane, any questions?
I do have, I have a question.
I mean, she's not going on at Mellon.
That, that sounds really true. Have you, without mentioning any, have you had teachers report kids with symptoms? And has that been a problem or?
So at my particular site, we have not had teachers report kids with symptoms. However, we've had parents who call in and say, hey, you know, so-and-so was not feeling well this morning, so I decided to keep him home today and I'll watch him and I'll call you back later and let you know if I think you should come in tomorrow. So our parents are taking it very, very seriously as well. And we've had that happen a couple of times, actually. But speaking of children with symptoms, I do want to address that our plan for our additional health room personnel that we're getting through the CARES dollars is we have designated a portable that is located near the front office so they're not having to walk through the entire campus or anything like that. But we chose to do that in a portable because that was a standalone ventilation system. And I know you asked the question about the filters and the frequency of that. So just trying to use a lot of common sense. Of course, nobody has all the answers, but trying to use as much common sense as possible as we prepare for our kids to come back. And, you know, just making sure that we are continuing to build those relationships with our parents so that they do trust us enough to have that dialogue back and forth in regards to what's going on. And, and if they feel like we're doing our very best for them, then they're going to do their part to do their very, very best for us and monitor and self-check temperatures and things like that.
One other question. Did you have any trouble, I mean, you see any difficulty with the cleaning guidelines that the janitors or the custodians or, I mean, is there, is that going smooth, like since all this began?
It is, it is going very smoothly. The district has been great in making sure that we had the supplies that we needed to make that happen. Both before, you know, we brought kids back in July and since then. And the teachers, we've made sure that every teacher in their room had some access to some supplies for them to use as well. Not because we're expecting our teachers to do that, but because some of them like that feeling of having that control. So just making sure that that additional is available should they feel the need to wipe down something specific. And as far as laptops and things like that, we, the kids are all isolated. Like I said, no sharing of supplies. They have one laptop that they use, which is theirs that is checked out to them. So they're not even switching keyboards or any of that. And the district made some very smart decisions early on when we started down this track with ordering like the Myon reading program for the elementary school. So that allows us to run our labs without having to actually physically touch books because a lot of those books are either available through Myon or it's set up on the same Fanta Sempernel level so that you can do comparable books and they can still use their own personal laptop and they're not having to contaminate everything and having to, you know, completely wipe down every single, single things that they would use during a school day.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, you want to come up? And Mr. Adams is a middle school principal and of course, there's a few different nuances as far as how I'm about to back the middle school kids.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. So when it comes to numbers, right now, we have 161 students who have chosen option two. We have 36 students who have chosen option three. We have 127 students who have chosen option one, brick and mortar. And we still have 216 that have not responded. So we'll be getting in touch with those students as well as our option two students once things are finalized here today. As to safety precautions, we're looking at different lunch areas. Of course, we have our cafeteria, but we're also looking at allowing students to go outside to eat lunch as much and as often as possible. We're also looking at opening our auditorium stage for seating as well. When it comes to transitions, because as Ms. Weaver said, it's a little bit different than the elementary school, we are actually looking to figure out some one-way traffic patterns in and out of buildings to support that, making sure our students are wearing their masks, masks during the transitional periods. We have purchased as much disinfectant as we possibly can with microfiber wipes. We'll have bottles stationed in every classroom. It also does not include a hand sanitizer that we're purchasing as well as any Clorox wipes that we can purchase as well. When it comes to our health room assistant, the additional health room assistant, we have an area that is available for them. And there's actually an area in which they could transport those students directly to the parent car without going through our entire campus, which is really important to us.
Yes.
We've also taken the opportunity to, to try and help and support our teachers as much as possible. We have purchased an air filter tower for every single classroom that we have on our campus for our stu, for our teachers. And we've also purchased an additional filter for those air filter towers. So just trying to do any extra that we could possibly do to support our teachers with their concerns as well as with our students. What other questions might you guys have of us?
The fiber that you're providing, do they get?
They, they will be washed on a daily basis.
Because it's one for every period or?
We are looking at doing one for every period, yes.
Because that was a concern, they only had one fiber rag for all day for six or seven periods.
Yes. Good question.
Ms. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the teachers, heard about the students relating to what Mrs. Whitehurst mentioned, I think it was Mrs. Whitehurst. Have you had any requests from teachers to do the option two, I think it is?
I have had three teachers request firmly option two. And we have had some communication as to, you know, what does that look like? It'll be on our campus. If it's feasible, what does our numbers look like and things like that? So we've been in communication with our teachers as well as our staff, but it was only three teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
Jane, Jane, do you have any questions, Mr. Adams?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
I want to mention, before Mr. Helms comes up, I want to mention, I don't know if Libby mentioned it or Laura,
but we are looking at a staggered start for kindergarteners, which basically we would have, Libby, I don't know if you want to address this or not, but we would have some, some start early, you know, the regular beginning of school and then others kind of later. And you want to just address that because I think that's pretty important for our kindergarteners.
Absolutely. We're looking at that for our pre-K and our kinder students. And what we're looking at is starting approximately five students per day until the class is filled. And the idea is to have the parents make an appointment so they wouldn't come in at the general start time. If our general start time is 7:45, we wouldn't have them come in at 7:45. But for example, we would have a pre-K and kindergarten student from each class come in at 8:30. Of course, they would be screened before they came in. The mama in me says that I'm not sending my four or five-year-old into a room where I haven't ever personally met the teacher, so it's going to allow for us to do that. It's also going to allow for, once those kids get in, to teach safety procedures and some expectations that we normally maybe would take for granted because we haven't been in this COVID situation. And then the next day, they would be five more kids, but the original five would, would return. We have it set up, we have an instructional assistant that would be assigned to help to monitor the kids while the teacher is meeting with the new arrival. And then those children can then help demonstrate. So over the course of the week, you would have your entire class in, but with an opportunity to, number one, give some parents some reassurance that I know who I'm dropping my child off with to answer any questions that they may specifically have and to also teach those four and five-year-olds who sometimes takes a little more practice to be comfortable and safe while they are at school.
Thank you, Libby.
Thank you.
Mr. Helms, principal of Inarkin High, different animal at the high school level, but Brian, you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so it's a little different animal. So right now, and you guys know, being in a high school and Jane will too with this, not having your schedule done is a lot unnerving. But I will say this and commend to you guys that taking the time to go through this process to have a better understanding of where we're going and what we're doing gives us an advantage. If we did add these two weeks, it would give us advantage to plan for that. And so when Ken is talking, talking about shutting down rooms and things like that, that's really unnerving. But if we're going to option two, planning for that is, is very, very hard to do. So when you're asking, will a teacher be able to do option two? I don't know that yet because I have to see how many kids I have in each room, how many kids I have in, you know, this, so on and so forth. So the second period has four people in it, I'm going to adjust that. Where if those four kids are going to go somewhere else, then I can use a teacher for something else. And so it, it's a, it's going to be a adjustment happening and giving those, that extra time will benefit that. And I do understand the parents that have been home with their kids for a long time. And so I understand that. I got three kids myself, but looking at everything as a whole, it benefits us greatly at the school level to have that extra time to be able to train the people and for us to prepare. So if we do have a room that is isolated and we can move that to virtual and we have a plan for that, okay, I got these, this, this, this is how we move there. Because right now, we're planning it as we go. And just to say this aloud, this has never been done. And so we're doing this on the fly and figuring this out as we go as educators and we adjust. And so I commend you guys that have been our teachers that are willing to come back and work. It takes a lot. And so I won't bore you. We're, we're doing, I'm doing a lot of similar hand sanitizer, one-way in, one-way routes. We're doing a lot of those things for our school. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
And, and I guess for you and Ms. Adams, planning periods, do they exist?
Yes, ma'am. They will.
So they will have those, that time and that teacher will be?
It's required by contract. Yes, ma'am. They still will have that.
Thank you. Okay. No, just for everybody to hear.
All of our teachers have planning times as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just need people to hear it, hear it.
Brian, can you speak to, I know our, our high school principals work closely together and pick at each other and all that too. But they are a pretty unified group. But Brian was talking about if he had a class, especially a digital class, where they may have only a few students, they have the capability of working across high schools where Black High might have a teacher that could digitally teach students at Black High and Inarkin High or Crescent City High or whatever the case might be. That's the beauty of having the digital learning where you could meet those unique needs. So.
Correct. And, and that's going to take time to plan that out. That's not instant. It's because we have to get it all the way out and then go, okay, I got four kids that I need for pre-cup. All right, these four kids who has, and it's going to be working together. And then that also, when we start working together, if we do have a classroom, we have to do that, we have that flow that will happen. And so this has never, I, I've never been trained in this. It's not like any of us have been trained in this. So it's something we've got to learn together and I think that that time will help with that.
Well, you, you are, you, you know, you act in place of the parent like any, any district employee. So we know you're going to treat the kids, all of you, as if they're on, your own children. And I, I like the fact the superintendent brought representatives from the, the rural and, and the different geographic regions. It's over 50 miles from Clifton Road to Melrose. I mean, it's a long way. I mean, it's like you live in Jacksonville from Palatka. So you, I made a comment in the former, in a last meeting and I was quoted in the press of saying where kids, a lot of kids are safer at school than they are at home. And I think, I don't know if people understood that, but there are a lot of, the sexual abuse numbers and, and, and the numbers of mental health issues are, are just, you know, going up and up and across the state in our diverse geographic region of rural mobile home communities and things. That there's a lot of kids out there that are really suffering and, and they are safe when they come to school because you guys keep them safe. And, and for that, at the bottom of my heart, we appreciate what you do. But I, I feel very comfortable. I think that we're going to have problems. We've always had problems, but we're fortunate enough to know that we're going to drop back ten and punt if it's not working and go from there. So.
And, and I also think the superintendent addressing with the food, that was a big concern of mine when we first said extending it. And beating the kids, that's a big deal.
And to pay for the teachers.
And to pay for the teachers is another big thing. So I think having this transition, because the superintendent from y'all's power could have just made this decision. So that's a big shout out to him, taking the time to do this, to explain it to everybody, to be very clear in our expectations of where we have to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And another thing I wanted to point out, which is great on behalf of the management team and for you all, is, you know, going through the, the process, allowing parents and, and teachers and employees to visualize what could possibly transpire and all of us working together to make it happen. And so it's, 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 it's great.
Thank you, principals, for being here. And they're always available for questions if you need them. But Madam Terry, I would just submit to the board, and again, you do however you want to, but if it's okay with you to hear from each board member, I would like to hear from each board member kind of where they are now. And, you know, as far as the delayed start of school, before I make a decision, and I really need to kind of get a temperature, not, again, I'm not pulling you. I just want to kind of get your thoughts and answer any further questions. Because when you leave here today, I want you to be totally satisfied that we've brought as much information to you as possible.
Okay. Mrs. Pickens? Well, I think, I think it's been excellent and a lot of information. And I am 100% for delaying. I, I just feel like it get, it helps our administrators, it helps in planning, it helps, may hurt some of our parents. Like you said, that their children, you know, with daycare and jobs and stuff, I, I understand that. But the overall majority and the planning for the schools, I think it's, I think it's critical.
Mr. Buckles?
I think you've done a wonderful job and your staff and team and principals and everybody has, has done a lot of, of good. I was prepared to start August 10th. It didn't really, you know, after the task force and what I heard, I felt very good because much of what I've heard today, I already heard there. But the other board members didn't hear it. But my big concern was the fact that the, the pay for the employees and, and what Ms. Pickens said, I think we all have, is a concern for parents who, who ready, are ready for the kids to come back to school. But I will support out of an abundance of caution going back a few days later.
Okay.
Two, two weeks later, you mean?
Yes, two weeks later.
Ms. McInnes?
Yes, very informative today. Appreciate the workshop. I would be in favor of the delay as well. I think we need to actually take advantage of the time too because they brought some very important points today about how we need to prepare our students. And if, I know with Facebook and our website, some of the, just some of the simple things that the, that Mary mentioned about recognizing the symptoms, if we, I know we have some great people here that have already done a lot with animation. Brian and Pierce did something about the COVID thing and they made it a caricature. But if we did that so kids can get on track and on verse and be prompted to know, and it was really, I was glad to hear from Ms. Weaver that she has summer school because I've heard from one other teacher that actually went public about how she felt secure about being in summer school this year. She had a lot of reservations. She's got compromise situations as well. So I think we, we should jump on it right now if we're going to delay and make some informative things on our social media and put it out there and advertise how we can be safe and just keep the repetition all the way.
Okay. And I'd just like to remind parents that may be listening, don't forget the nine-week commitment. That's going to help these principals that you have heard. It makes things flow a whole lot smoother. So please hear that part of it, a nine-week commitment should you choose option one, option two, and option three is the semester. So please to help us out to do this, educate your children. So, please to help us out to do this, to educate your children. Love what Brown and Pierce is doing by way of Mr. McInnes sharing that with us. I too concur with what the board has said, everything, the feeding, the time, the additional time to make preparations to get contact with parents that have not responded, the numbers that you quoted. And, and again, I can't say enough about the management team and the leadership and the effort that is being put into this. It certainly helps to ease the anxiety, and so I too am in favor of the two-week delay. Mrs. Crawford, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, baby.
You're fine, you're fine. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who had a part in preparing for today's presentation. It was extremely informative. It helped allay some of my fears. I especially would like to thank Kenna and Mary and Quinn for participating in this meeting. They answered many of my questions as well. I, like all the other board members, we've received many, many emails from parents and teachers who were concerned about going back to school. Of the fifteen that I read prior to the meeting starting, there were only two, one teacher and one parent, who said they were, they wanted to go back where we're supposed to. All of the other emails, thirteen, teachers and parents have grave concerns about starting on our original start date, as, as do I. So, therefore, I entirely support the delay in, in start time, the two-week delay.
Madam Terry, if I could, thank you, Jane.
Before, because you can address this for me before you share with us. I understand the two-week delay. I'm in favor of it. How does that impact our graduations that we had set? I did see some of the other districts that did theirs over, over the weekend, the past weekend, they shared it, and I thought it went exceptionally well. So, if that is still on, give those dates so that?
Well, I don't have the dates right in front of me, but they're all going to be in the, the first week of August.
Yes.
And just really kind of like we do in the past, the only exception is U.R. Roberts will not be inside as, as they have in the past. They will be at Blackus Football Field on the Saturday night after Blackus' graduation. You know, but I, we did put this in the paper, and I think we, we did a paper post.
Yes, it is. It is.
But again, to remind you, each, each graduate will have a number of tickets. We are doing the ticket systems, so general population will not be allowed to attend. However, we are live streaming those ceremonies. We're limiting the number of people who will be on stage. We're working it out. Our principals will, will have the, you know, the, the plumbers or whatever on the table or something. We're not shaking hands. So, they have these all planned out. Everyone will be required to wear a mask when they enter. So, we have procedures in place. The main thing is we want kids to have a traditional graduation.
Yes.
And have to make some accommodations.
And I've asked many of the questions, not because I didn't pay attention in the other board meetings and did not hear. I'm asking so that the people that are listening will get this information that is so crucial, that they won't show up without a ticket, that they won't show up unmasked.
Right.
And so, I just want to be sure that the listening public is aware.
Right. And we definitely want to, we're, we're trying to communicate as best we can, so thank you for saying that. If I may?
Rick, you and, I, I would just have to say, you and your staff, Rhonda and Sonia, when you and Thomas, all of you guys getting together and ensuring that we can pay these folks is, I think, made, is a tipping point for me because, I mean, people's house payments and things are just, that, that gives us time to breathe, and with your, still having our emergency powers.
As soon as I can.
Certain staffs can't change, you know, it may.
Well, I commend our staff, and especially our personnel and finance, you know, that kind of change is very substantial, and you just don't flick a switch and make it happen.
You don't.
They had to spend hours and hours working on that, and especially with Skyward. I mean, that's a whole different animal, so.
Congratulations on a job well done.
Yeah, they, they are certainly serving our employees to the best, and thank you guys for what you've done there. But if I may, I just want to say, I, I mean, I'm feeling very supportive with the fact that I can, I can go ahead and tell you that it would be my desire and my decision to go ahead and delay school for two weeks. So, and again, bring this to you at the August third meeting, but using my emergency powers to do that. I do want to say that, again, communication is vital.
Amen.
And actually, in our staff meeting today, we talked about tomorrow morning, because we want to have time to put this together, but tomorrow morning, actually sitting down, putting together some of these talking points, especially some issues you've raised, and not only me, but other people, possibly some of our principals and other staff, teachers, maybe a student, who knows? We're working on that. But we want to do maybe a combined video and talk about what does delaying school look like, and, you know, how is that going to help us and so forth. So, that's what we're working on. And we're also, we're going to try to reach out and, again, reach out to our employees. I know that's been a question. You know, we, we rely on our union to kind of give us some information, but we're also going to reach out and send out some, like, survey, survey questions. What are some concerns you have? What are some problems you have with the delayed start? And again, open up that dialogue so we can make sure we're addressing all of our employees' concerns. So, with that said, staff, did I, did I forget anything, or anything you want to add?
A lot, a lot of brick and mortar teachers are already showing up at their classrooms and trying to get ready, so.
I think the teachers would appreciate that kind of.
Yeah. We definitely are listening to them. And again, like some of our staff said, two-week delay, I anticipate a migration from three to two, option three to option two, and maybe option two to option one. So, I think in the end, we may see some, some changes there, so.
Sure.
So, again, I submit to you that I, I will go ahead and decide to delay the start of school. We'll put this on the agenda for your approval August third. And again, feels like you can call me anytime if you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the board?
I'd just like to tell you that I am so glad you came from home, so we didn't have to hear that. You and Miss Crawford had a conversation going on now, I'm telling you.
I'd like to say that I had a police escort, because I got here in record time, but I didn't.
Can Mr. Harvey give you and show you how to, how to put YouTube on your computer?
I went to YouTube, but, but I, but I lost this. So, it was just a matter of balancing the two.
Yeah, we'll give you some PD on that, if you need.
Hey, we made it happen. If there's nothing else to come before the board, I officially declare that this workshop is adjourned.